See where you're going.
These in the drawer at home, so they're not good either.
I always have a spare pair too, that's my last pair.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. It's May 20th, 2024. We've recognized a quorum of our Licensing Board here tonight. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular Licensing Board meeting held on May 6th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Prove.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingchime. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is a new cigarette, tobacco, and vaping application by Big J's Smoke Shop.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, Alderman Zingchime. Clerk, these several applications tonight, did all the applications come in, filled out correctly and?
They did.
They did, including the next item on our agenda?
Yes.
Okay, great. All those, did we take a motion on this?
Yeah.
Yep.
We did. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is Class B Combination Liquor License Renewal. Several licenses in your packet, the clerk says they're all filled out and ready to go. I will make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick for the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last is an original Class B Combo License for the Cornerstone Restaurant Group.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime, second Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and that adjourns our Licensing Board meeting.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have three items on the agenda. Item number one is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting of May 6th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Allen.
And Alderman Sternig. Any questions, corrections? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, approval of share, ride, taxi, drug, and alcohol policy. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening. I'd like to give a brief summary of this policy and why we're here tonight. So the city is going through a triannual, triannual review, basically an audit with the Federal Transit Administration. And part of that audit, they determined that because our city mechanics work on the city taxis and we receive federal funding for that, we need a drug and alcohol policy that is recognized by the federal government. So that's the policy you have in front of you here today. So we're requesting the city to approve this policy. It's something that needs to be done at the council level for the federal funding.
Motion to approve. Alderman Allen and Alderman Sparts. Any questions for Doug? Alderman Allen.
Is, do we have a similar policy? Is this in line with our drug and alcohol policy for city employees in general?
We do have one at the city level. I think this one is a little bit more in-depth because they're considered safety-sensitive positions. So this one is recognized by the federal government, I guess, versus the city's alone policy. But I know the city does have a drug and alcohol policy.
Would it make sense to have one policy, one-size-fits-all, or is there, has HR looked at that as an option?
I'm not sure if they have or not. I would assume that would be an administration or HR decision to maybe review that and compare if there's a lot of discrepancies.
Alderman Sparts.
My question was along the same lines. Is this policy in effect currently for the federal, with the federal program? Do we have this, have we adopted this before, or is like this is a renewal, or is this new?
So it is, it is an active policy. It just covers our mechanics now. So the city owns the taxis and then we lease them to our provider, and then the mechanics work on them. It helps reduce our local share, so they were paid to maintain our own vehicles. Since they do that, they have to be under this policy, which go right way employees are currently underneath the same policy.
Okay, so we're adopting that to add it in, so it is new for the city employees?
For the, yes, for.
Keep that to a split.
Any other questions? Alderman Sternig.
My only question would be for Jay and for Ian as to whether there's anything that is in this policy that conflicts with our current city policies, or are they in alignment? Not that we get in a situation where you have different, potentially lower standards than one versus what we have in the city one, or vice versa.
I mean, it's possible that this is more stringent than a general city one, but that's also appropriate. I mean, you would have similar, similarly more stringent requirements for like people with CDLs, right? Than you would for somebody who works in an office setting. So I mean, it's not unusual to have more stringent policies for certain things. It doesn't necessarily conflict because it applies to a specific safety requirement.
Okay.
I mean, no different than, again, there's some overlap with city handbook for fire and police personnel, and they would be held to different standards than, you know, somebody who works in an office.
Great, thank you.
Just want, just want to clarify this. This is just strictly because of the mechanics at the city that is working on these vehicles that this policy had to be adopted. Had nothing to do with all the other employees, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right, do we have any other questions? There are none, there's a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, approval of tax service PTASP, Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. Doug?
Good evening again. This Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan is something we bring before you anytime there's changes required or updating. There's a lot of information in here. To be honest with you, the only part that changed was the change of when Steve Schmeling retired, his name was in this document, so it's updated to the new superintendent, Kevin Davis. So I'm just bringing it for you to approve the updates.
Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Sternig. Any questions for Doug on this one? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Be no further business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn as chair.
The Finance Committee has called to order. We have two items on this evening's agenda. The first is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on May 6th.
Second.
Thank you very much, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Allen. Any questions, additions, deletions, comments, edits that need to be made? None being said, all those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion passes. Second one is an approval of an airport hangar lease, Lot 37 at 316 Aerial Drive. John?
Thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening. We have another hangar that's going to be built out at the airport. It's a pretty standard lease agreement that you have before you. It's for Lot 37 at 316 Aerial Drive. If you have any questions, let me know. This will allow for one additional hangar sometime in the future, next door to it, so we might be back in the near future for another hangar in the future.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, was that Zingchime?
Yep.
And Allen, thank you very much. Any questions for John on this one? There being no questions, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair. Thank you very much. Good evening. It is Monday, May 20th, 2024, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to our Wisconsin State statutes. Clerk, can you please confirm this meeting was properly posted?
I can confirm.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a quorum of our common council tonight with Alderman Berquist excused absent. Our clerk is also excused absent tonight, and we have our deputy clerk panting here tonight. Thank you for being here. Our first item of business is the approval of our common council regular meeting minutes from May 6th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zingchime. Are there any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a presentation tonight, and I have a proclamation I would like to read. I'll entertain a motion on this.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, and I'll take the second by Alderman Sparts. Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas emergency medical services consist of pre-hospital emergency medical care at the scene of an incident and in transport to a hospital, and whereas EMS systems are highly complex, integrated structures with multiple responders and organizations working together to collectively benefit people in need, and whereas the City of West Bend's EMS system includes firefighters, paramedics, police officers, and first responders, dispatchers, hospitals, and healthcare providers, and more. And whereas West Bend firefighters, paramedics are trained to provide lifesaving emergency medical services and are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas in 2023, the West Bend Fire Department responded to 3,964 ambulance requests, 98 intercept requests, and 111 interfacility transports. And whereas the West Bend Fire Department provides exceptional fire protection, EMS, fire prevention, and public education services to our community. And whereas the West Bend Fire Department personnel engages in specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving EMS skills. And whereas across the, across the nation, communities recognize the value of and critical need for EMS providers during Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Joel Ongert, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 20, through 20, May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of West Bend, and I encourage the community to join in recognizing our dedicated EMS team. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief?
Good evening. Just like to have a couple words. First of all, thank you for approving that resolution, recognizing our emergency medical service providers in the city and the county. As we begin our Celebration EMS Week 2024, it's my honor and privilege to acknowledge the invaluable contributions of our emergency medical service personnel. This year's theme, honoring our past, encourages us to reflect on the incredible journey of EMS in America and recognize the dedication of all those who have served and the legacy they built. Not only did I grow up in a firehouse, but had the privilege of growing up in the time of Johnny and Roy and the popular TV show Emergency, which really was a, a great public view of the birth and growth of emergency medical services in America. Because of that, my, my youth and my TV youth, EMS and the fire service have always been one and the same synonymous to me and belonging to one another. From those early days of prehospital emergency care, which began as something mostly considered completely primitive, especially considering that at one point in time in this country, ambulance services were provided by tow truck companies and funeral homes, neither of which probably gave a good prognosis of somebody suffering a medical emergency. But to witness the journey that has become where EMS is the highly sophisticated, coordinated system that it is today, I think that that evolution over that time in a relatively short period of time, you know, of less than 50 years or at 50 years, is really remarkable. In my time here in West Bend, I've had the privilege of watching our own EMS providers in action and witnessed firsthand their commitment, compassion, and competence. I want to thank each and every one of them for their, their public service to their community every day. I would also like to recognize and thank the members of our Public Safety Dispatch Service and our Police Department, who also are integral members of that EMS system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Our consent agenda tonight, items two through six, were all just taken up in committees. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
I heard Alderwoman Sizer and a second by Alderman Allen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we'll move on to our agenda items for consideration tonight, our City of West Bend flag.
Good evening, everybody. Name is Maxim Zernia, and before I get started, I'd just like to thank Mayor Ongert for putting me on the agenda tonight, and to all of you for hearing me out and listening to me. I've been on the agenda for this item once before in February, and I know it's been a few months since then. We have two more, two new council members, so I'd give a, I'm just going to go through a quick summary of the background I said at that last meeting. About a year, a little over a year ago, I saw, in spring of 2023, I saw that the City of Port Washington had adopted their own flag, and I thought that that would be a very good thing for their community, would be helpful, and I thought West Bend is a community I'm very passionate about. I've spent a lot of time archiving and doing historical research on it. So that summer, I started knocking on doors, going to farmers' markets and county fairs, looking for signatures of people who would support the idea of West Bend having a flag. And the process Port Washington used should be outlined in a document that I passed out before the meeting. I also showed all the people who signed it. I showed them my flag and if they supported my flag, which a majority of them did. And for those of, for those of you who have already heard the symbolism, it, I apologize, but for those of you who haven't, I'll quickly run through it. The green represents the flag, the West Bend situation to the kettle moraine and the agriculture and forestry surrounding it. The blue represents the, the river, the Malacca River that flows through West Bend. It's integral to our early industry, our name, the West Bend of the river. This darker shade represents the previously independent municipality of the Village of Barton that was incorporated into the village in 1961. This gray stripe represents our historical downtown development, which is, in my eyes, the cultural heart of the city. And the burgundy color represents just the industry of the city and the city as a whole. It's a city, it's a color the city uses often. And then this is the silhouette of the Old County Courthouse or the tower, which I think is our most recognizable building here in West Bend. But in the end, I got 110 signatures and the support of many community leaders. And then in February, I spoke with former Alderman Justice Model, who helped me get on the agenda. And during that meeting, I heard many of your concerns, and I got, I got the idea that the council wanted more specifics and a more, a better outlined plan or recommendations on how this should be done. So I've compiled one document that outlines some of your concerns, as well as just general information about the, this item. And then the other document is, outlines three different possible ways that I see a flag adoption process could be handled. And I'm hoping by the end of this item that the elder people would come to consensus or choose one of these scenarios that they would want to be used for this flag adoption process. And the, those scenarios, I'll quick run through them. So I'll first define what a rank choice voting system is, which is a system of voting where voters are able to list out their first, second, and third favorite candidates, and in this case scenario, flag designs. And if no flag design has over 50% of the vote, those who voted for the design with the least amount of votes, their vote would go to their second favorite and third favorite until one design has 50% of the vote. So the first scenario I have on here, to summarize, is where the city orchestrates the election and the entire process of it. Interested parties would have 30 days to send submissions to the city via email, and if the city receives more than four submissions, then the common council would narrow it down to four. The election will be done through an online form created by the city that incorporates that ranked choice voting system I mentioned. And, and then whatever design gets the, is most popular through that ranked choice vote system would be put on the next agenda for adoption. Scenario two, to quickly summarize that, it's where I would run the election and I would keep the city informed and in tune with the process, involved. So the only responsibilities of the city in this scenario would be to narrow down the submissions if I received more than four, and to adopt the final flag from said election. I would be creating a separate Facebook page to advertise this and to try to reach people, as many people as possible. And I would take submissions from an email. People can submit an email, they have 30 days, like in the other scenario. And I would very much hope that the city and other community organizations would also attempt to advertise this or help me get to more people, because I, I'm not all popular on Facebook. But scenario three would be, and I think this, I would not recommend this one, but it's an option. Scenario three would be no public election is held, rather the West Bend city flag designed by me would be put on the next available common council agenda for adoption. So, I know you could also argue there's a fourth scenario where you just tell me you don't want a flag and I can stop bothering you, but overall, I know I've said this a lot, but I'm confident in my belief that this is necessary for a city to have a flag. It'll, it will create a greater sense of community and togetherness, and in my eyes, it's an essential step to building a greater sense of character in a municipality. So comments, questions, concerns?
Alderman Allen.
I'm, I'm not sure that this is the best use of the council's time, to be quite honest with you at this time. I've, I've had no, nobody, none of my constituents have come to me with, with a request that we create a flag. We have, we have lots of big issues that we need to deal with, and that might be a better use of our time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. Any other comments, discussion on this? Sure. Alderman Sparts, you, I was waiting for you to raise your hand.
I'm debating what I want to say here. I, I like the concept. I, I agree with our identity, the, bringing up the identity. The exact process, I'm not sure. I kind of agree with Alderman Allen on that, if that's to the point where it's set our, us to decide, and he's trying to do a poll and that kind of thing. Sounds like he's willing to take it, take it by the horns and move forward with it and something. City staff probably has some comments on it too, so I'll defer to that.
Please.
Well, I'm not sure my comments are going to be any different than they were back in February. I applaud Maxim and nice work. It's good to see a young individual put together documents like this and, and present them and be able to present in front of a council. My recommendation is similar to Alderman Allen. There's a time and a place for this within, I'm convinced there will be a time and a place for this kind of conversation within our organization, in my opinion, and I know Jess is an expert in this space, and then we have a communications department. We've talked about this. There, there will be a time where we're going to go through a rebranding or, and, and coming up with what that might look like for the entire city. Probably our logo needs some refreshing, it's been a bit. And like the county went through this a few years ago, and they, they spent a bunch of time and, and money on it, and I think they have a solid product, one that they're proud of. A flag can be a part of a conversation at that time. As far as Alderman Allen's comment that it might not be the best use of council's time, we have a boatload of, a literal boatload of items, big items that the city's dealing with right now, and this isn't one that if we were, my word, saddled with this flag as a, hey, we need to do this now, would, would get the appropriate attention. It's, it's better suited through, in my opinion, through a, an intentional rebranding and full-on marketing look for our city. And we've talked about this a little bit for the downtown master plan that's out there, that there, there is some conversation taking place regarding branding and what the downtown looks like. It, in my opinion, again, it's just a bigger picture conversation and one that I'm, hopefully Maxim, you'll still be interested in and have the energy for if and when we're, we're there. I'm convinced it'll be a when, not if, but just one that I wouldn't recommend going through at this point. Thanks.
Thank you.
And wouldn't we want continuity with that rebranding?
Any more comments, discussion? We have this on our agenda as an action item, Ian, do we need to take any formal action on it?
If you don't take action, it would just die without action. So you could take action to, you know, take a motion to, you know, not take any action at this time, or you could just not make a motion and move forward.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to not take any action at this time, and maybe later on, when you've got everything all in your row, all your ducks in a row, and you need approval, I think that would be the best solution.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for no action at, at this time?
Second.
Second by Alderman Allen. We do have a motion on the floor with a second. Is there any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Maxim.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item tonight is action item number eight, Memorandum of Understanding for the Downtown Master Plan and Downtown Planter Project. The MOU is in your packets. This is something we have talked about in the past, and this is kind of memorializing the work that's been done between the private sector group, the city, the downtown business association's been involved in this, the bid board, and the, the private sector group especially wanted us to, to put an MOU in writing, to really memorialize the work, the work, the contributions, our contributions from the city. I think the main contribution that you'll see in here, which is a financial contribution coming from the city, is a commitment of $100,000 for the Downtown Planter Project, which I've talked about in the past. Beyond that, Jay, I don't know if you have any comments on the MOU?
I don't, I, I, I want, yeah, I'm very familiar. I just want the council to know that the city's staff, Mike, Jess, myself, we, we worked on this in earnest. The, the mayor was certainly involved in the wording of this. Want to thank the private sector leaders again for, for their efforts and for the contribution for the planters. I, I'm not sure if, if now would be an appropriate time for an update on that, if that's something that's.
I would probably ask Jess, I know we didn't talk about this in advance, but can you give
us the latest on the timing of the planters and maybe what's happened in downtown in the last couple of weeks?
Thanks in advance, Jess.
Sure, happy to provide an update and can easily do so. We've been working on this a lot, so pretty much every day, there's something to do with the planters and the improvements downtown, and it's really exciting. If you haven't been down there recently, it looks really wonderful. There was a big cleanup effort that took place about a week ago with our public works and parks and communications and many staff members throughout, all over the organization, cleaned up Sixth Avenue, put mulch down, public works did some street cleaning. But with this project in particular, 26 hanging baskets were installed on the new light poles on Main Street, and they have beautiful flowers in them. There's two baskets on 13 poles. An additional five baskets will be installed this week in Old Settlers Park, in the same places they were before. There's some posts that are up, and so that's looking good. We have over 100 planter and tree, flower and tree plots that are planned to arrive in the next several weeks. in the next several weeks. We're looking at maybe the first order shipping out sometime later next week and arriving and being installed downtown with a number of flowers and shrubs that will be placed in each of the pots. So, it will be ongoing throughout the summer. Some of the larger tree pots are not planned to arrive until later on in the summer, so it'll just keep on looking better and better as we go.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? Alderman Zingsheim.
The $100,000, Jay, this goes back to a couple of weeks ago, when this is mostly going to be just for maintenance watering. That was what the discrepancy was, I guess, a couple of meetings ago. That's mostly where that city money is going to be allotted, Judge?
So, no, the, the $100,000 is going towards capital, so the actual purchase of the planters.
Okay. Is there, is it, there's still discrepancy on the upkeep and the watering, then? Is that for a different meeting or a different time?
I wouldn't say there's discrepancy. The MOU makes it clear. The bid board did take up this action again and approved up to $30,000 worth of watering and weeding in the downtown, so a contract that they've authorized in past years for a smaller amount. They went up to $30,000 this year to, to attempt to water more. If it goes beyond then, we'll, we'll address it at that time. We'll probably bring a resolution back before council, asking for funds from somewhere or attempting to figure that out.
Alderman Schmitt.
What was the previous amount from previous years?
Of the bid board? Jess, I might call on you again. Do you know the previous amount of the bid board contract with Scotts? If this year's $30,000, what, what did we contract with them in the past?
I don't know the exact number, but in the past, we've done approximately six or so $1,000 for the weed spraying, and then back many years ago, they did do watering, but I don't have that figure off the top of my head.
It'd be nice to get rain every couple of days throughout the summer, I will admit. Scotts estimated the watering contract to be $50,000, and Scotts also talked about how he hasn't, he hasn't seen these pots and planters yet, and so he doesn't quite, he doesn't quite know what he's getting into until they arrive, and they won't be installed until probably the last week of May, first week of June, if I remember right. So, you know, it's weather dependent, it, he kind of needs to get his grasp on how long it's going to take to water and that sort of thing. I'm very thankful to the bid on the $30,000. That will certainly get us, I hope, through at least half the summer, if not more, as long as we continue to get some rain, that sort of thing, so. Any more questions? Comments, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's for Alderman Sternig. Our next agenda action item tonight is a memorandum of understanding between the City of West Bend Fire Department and the Village of Kewaskam Fire Department to pursue consolidation of EMS services. Chief Noren.
Tonight, we have a memorandum of understanding for you to consider. As we said, it was for a proposal for the consolidation of emergency medical services between the West Bend Fire Rescue Department and Kewaskam Fire Department. Background on this is, we've been meeting for several months with the leadership of the Kewaskam Fire Department. They approached us some time ago, asking us what, if any, help we could provide them. As everyone knows, it's been in the, the news quite a bit lately. EMS services across the state are struggling. That struggles both with personnel and funding options, and Kewaskam is not immune to that. They've had a very dedicated department for quite some time, but they've been running on what I would consider a skeleton, skeleton crew, and quite frankly, their, their members have been overburdened and they can't quite cover all their shifts. After a meeting for several meetings over these last few months, we decided that the most logical direction forward was to consolidate our efforts in EMS and go forward with the proposal. This is not the proposal, or the final proposal, or even a proposed proposal at this time. Our intent here tonight is to make a public statement to kind of stifle out rumors and backroom conversations and give some people some transparency into our negotiations as we move forward. Obviously, as we started having conversations with other stakeholders regarding our EMS services, you know, people start to get word of this, and then a lot of times inaccurate information gets out. So, we wanted to make a public statement on our intent and our direction in this consolidation. I think the important thing here is, first of all, to recognize the significant contribution of the members of the Kewaskam Fire and Ambulance Services over, over their time, that they've provided service for their community. I think that their efforts to, to not only provide that service have been commendable, but also the leadership it takes to say, you know what, this isn't working, and to sit down and work collaboratively with a neighbor. Our goals here, I won't read this word for word, but one is optimal utilization of resources. Collaboration, as we propose to do it, also results in an increased level of care for citizens in the Kewaskam ambulance service. The way it looks right now is they run less than a paramedic-level service, and when that service is needed, they call us for what we call an intercept, which then has members from both departments responding anyway. Under our new proposed or direction, or proposed direction, we would seek to take over the ambulance transports up there, in which case, a paramedic-level ambulance will be dispatched on the initial call for service. Obviously, an agreement like this will lead to more, or an increase in collaboration between our two communities and other ways for us to continue to share resources, which I do believe is a positive direction for the future. A few things we want to point out, one of the more important things is at the bottom of the first page, "In pursuit of the consolidated EMS, we commit to adhere to the following guiding principles. This initiative is principally a collaborative effort to maintain or improve EMS and provide a path for long-term stability for both communities. The final arrangement must be equitable and attainable for both communities, and the process and final arrangement must respect the history and considerable contributions of both organizations. We thought that any conversations in direction forward was important to establish some ground principles, and those are the principles we're operating from." As part of the consolidation of EMS services, Kewaskam Fire Department intends to provide non-transport EMS to the Kewaskam EMS response area. So, they would support us by providing first responders, sometimes even quicker than they can do now, as often they can respond directly from home and not have to go to the fire station to get the ambulance. As part of the consolidation of EMS services, the West Bend Fire Department intends to provide ambulance transport services to both organizations and EMS response areas. Manage billing for EMS for both organization, both organizations' response areas, and provide support and supplies to the Kewaskam non-transport EMS program. With that, that is the bones of the memorandum of understanding, and I would be willing to take your questions.
Thank you, Chief. Why don't I entertain a motion to put it on the floor? Alderman Sparts, thank you. Alderman Allen with the second. Questions? Alderman Allen.
Have you looked into, you know, combining things like training to up-level their, their staff and, and so that they can build up? I realize I'm not going to be doing the transport, but as I understand it, just from the last time I had a, you know, back-of-the-napkin conversation with somebody in Kewaskam, they, not their entire staff is EMS certified, so have, have they looked at that as, you know, up-leveling their services and combining with us on things like training?
That's a great question. We see training as a fundamental part of support. We also intend to support them in ways, they do have some people that are, initially that there's a chance they would license their service as a emergency medical responder-level service, and they have responders that currently have certifications beyond that level. We also would intend to work to cross-credential those folks, so they would also be rostered under our roster as far as EMS services go, and we could utilize those people at whatever level they, they currently possess. But to your base question, with training, we absolutely see that as part of supporting their non-transport service.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Butchlick.
I'm sure you've done your homework on this, but is that going to put any strain on, on your staff right now with them? I know you're looking at that number, and this is astronomical, you know, almost, was it, I think, almost 4,000 trips that you made last year? That's a lot of, that's a lot of rescue calls, and I was just wondering, is that going to be any issue with your staffs by combining Kewaskam?
It will result in around 500 additional calls for service and possibly around 300 to 350 additional ambulance transports. Not all calls result in an ambulance transport. So, it does equate to a call or two extra a day. In response to the 4,000 calls we currently do, I would say that it's no surprise to anyone up at that table that there is a study saying we still need some more manpower anyway, and this helps provide support to get to that goal of getting those additional positions by sharing resources. I do think that ultimately, sharing resources is a path forward for fire and emergency services in, in the country.
I just want to, I'm definitely in favor of this. I mean, every life means an awful lot, and if it means you've got an EAT master and you've got the proper people, that means an awful lot. One person doesn't get that care, that just doesn't make any difference. That's, I think that's, I think it's a great idea.
I appreciate that. I want to add to that, too, that it's important to recognize under current mutual aid agreements and intercept agreements that often we do, we do go on calls up there on a pretty routine basis, anyway.
Alderman Schmitt.
Does that, geographically, does that just cover the village perimeters and the city's perimeters or in-between?
That's just, still something we're working on. Obviously, there's several governing bodies that have to make that decision, for sure. I think we're safe to say that we're negotiating right now with the village and town of Kewaskam. We've made a commitment to have similar conversations with other governing organizations that would have to sign on, but we would anticipate a similar agreement in those other organizations or other communities, should they agree to sign on with us.
Thank you. Alderman Sternig.
Just, just a comment, and I commend you as well as the leadership of the Village of Kewaskam for taking this on proactively, or it, in, maybe out of necessity, but, but heading it on, right, and taking it and looking at what's going to be a best-fit solution, not only for us, but also for them, and vice versa, right? And I think your whole premise of sharing services and sharing resources to create a better, create better outcomes, right? Because that's what this is all about for both communities, is very commendable. So, thank you very much for taking on that leadership.
Thank you for your comments.
Any more comments, questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That's for Alderman Sparts.
Thank you.
Our next item tonight is the approval of an airport hangar lease, lot 37-316, Aerial Drive. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Zingsheim. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next handful of action items tonight, keen to us after approval by the plan commission, and Jim's going to take us through these, but I, I am going to read every one of these out, just so the public can hear what we're going to be talking about. So, the first is, "An ordinance to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the City of West Bend, Wisconsin, for a change in the recommended land use from commercial to family residential and multifamily residential to industrial, single-family residential to family residential and multifamily residential in the 2020 comprehensive plan for approximately 19 acres of land located approximately 600 feet east of South Main Street and south of West Progress Drive." I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, second by Alderman Allen. Jim.
Thank you. So, this comprehensive plan change is to kind of modify the existing land uses that we had out there. We didn't have a complete proposal for that when we did this in 2020 for the comprehensive plan. This essentially is just modifying those land uses slightly in the area. We're still keeping the basic uses out there, except for on the, the north end for the commercial, changing it to, to a light industrial or business park setting. But the residential side is pretty much just being modified slightly to basically amend the area for what a permanent plan is. We have a developer that's looking to redevelop that area, so this is following his land-use pattern for that. Overall, it still meets our requirements and is an acceptable alternative to the land-use plan.
Thanks, Jim. Alderman Allen.
Is commercial use a lesser, you know, a permitted use on industrial, or, I was unclear why we would move from commercial to industrial or vice versa?
Sure, so this area is kind of a mix of, we have, you know, odd, odd commercial out there and, you know, light industrial. This would be an extension of the industrial park. The zoning that we're, which is next on the agenda, the M3, is kind of a quasi-industrial commercial zoning. We do allow some intensive commercial zonings in there and light industrial uses in that zoning district. So, this is very comparable to what we would have had or anticipated as a commercial use.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Alderman Sparts.
How does the, just for the sake of discussion, how does the zoning progress from the current residential neighborhood to the south?
It's going to be very similar. So, what we're doing is doing, on the northern end, we're doing the more intense use with the institution or the industrial, going down to some multifamily on the west side, and then on the east side, we have some two-family and single-family transitioning into that single-family subdivision. So, it's a natural progression on how we've typically done our zoning throughout the city.
And just to clarify, this is actually a, and part of this move in this change in the zoning is the addition of single-family that wasn't part of the original zoning, correct?
Correct. Originally, the plan had two-family along that east side, up abutting that single-family that's out there now. This actually improves it or kind of makes it a little more of a transition. We're going to have single-family on that east side, transitioning to two-family on the west, to the multi, and then back to the commercial along Main Street.
Thank you.
Good questions. Alderman Allen.
Is the, the plan to extend that street, and it's the one off of here, and I don't remember what the name of it is.
Kingfisher.
Kingfish?
Kingfisher.
Yeah, is, is the plan to extend that, and that'll be where the residential will come in?
Correct, yeah. Kingfisher is intended to be extended to Progress. It's a need for, you know, looping our utilities and also providing services, you know, to those, or to that subdivision that they want to build there.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? All those in favor, please signify by, did I hear anybody have a question over here? No? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next action item is the same piece of property, but it's to permanently zone those 19 acres of land located 600 feet east of South Main and on the south side of West Progress Drive, from temporary zoning to the M3 Planned Business Park District, RS4 Single Family Residential, RD2 Two-Family Residential, and RM4 Multifamily Residential. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, second by Alderman Zingsheim. So, again, this is the same piece of property, we just changed the comprehensive plan, and now we're talking about zoning. Any more to it than that, Jim?
No, this actually designates the exact districts on what we're doing for the zoning, and they are consistent between the two plans.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, "An ordinance to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the City of West Bend for a change in the recommended land use from industrial to commercial for approximately 2.4 acres of land located at 320 and 340 South Fifth Avenue." Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Jim.
So this recommendation that we're asking for consideration is to change it from the institutional. It used to be the old courthouse site. It's changed hands to a nonprofit. They're still operating the museum and also as an event center. So this is just to help facilitate and recognize the use of change that we have out in that area.
Thank you. This is Tower Heritage Center. Any comments, questions, discussion? Yes, Alderman Sparts.
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Okay. Alderman Sparts, I believe, serves on that board, so thank you for abstaining.
Close enough.
Close enough, okay.
Steve Stuckey is here.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Alderman Allen.
I was looking at the map, and I noticed that this property was institutional, and kitty-cornered across the traffic circle, we have the library, which seems like it ought to be institutional. Is this something that we also at some point need to come into compliance? I just, it seemed like it was, I think, you know, if we could just kind of flip the two blocks.
Yeah, I don't think there's a need for it. I believe libraries are still a B2 or, you know, a commercial use. So there's really, I don't think anything that would really need to be changed for that. It's still appropriate.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? An abstention. So that carries six to zero with one abstention. Our next item is the same property. It's an ordinance to rezone the 2.4 acres of land located at 320 and 340 South Fifth Avenue from the I-1 Industrial and Public Service District to the B2 Central Business District, and the tax key is listed. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingsheim, and a second by Alderman Allen. Jim.
Yeah, and this is actually just fixing the permanent zoning for this, going from the I-1 Institutional and Public Service to the B2. Same explanation is just to acknowledge the use and also facilitate the future uses in the area.
Any questions? Alderman Sparts is going to abstain. Thanks. Comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And an abstention. Again, that carries six to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Item 15, "An ordinance to rezone approximately 0.11 acres of land located between 335 and 349 South Seventh Avenue from I-1 Institutional and Public Service District to RD2, which is two-family residential district." I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Allen. Jim.
So this is a zoning, a rezoning request. The property used to be owned by the museum when they were downtown, so that's why we have the legacy zoning of the I-1. It was anticipated for future expansion. That never moved forward, obviously, since they sold the property and moved to their new location. So this request is to change it from the I-1 institutional zoning to RD2, two-family zoning. The intent is to build a single-family home on this parcel, so this would be the first step to help facilitate that process.
Any comments, questions? Alderman Sparts. Sparts, Sternig, sorry. Sorry. These both start with an S.
Fair enough. So this is making the zoning to multifamily, but you just stated that the intent would be to put a single-family. Is the zoning then, should it be single-family? Or what is, or does it really matter?
So we can't spot zone, so we wouldn't do a single-family. So the RD2 is actually two-family residential, so it's not multi. Multifamily is three units or more.
Okay.
Versus two-family. Our code does have provisions to allow for a single-family house to be built in a two-family district.
Perfect.
With Plan Commission approval.
Good question. Any more questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is an ordinance establishing a ward redistricting plan. Who's going to take us through that one?
I can try. It's a cleanup measure. The county GIS department reached out to Mark Stram indicating that when our last annexation took place, we didn't follow through and update the maps with the wards. That's really what it is. So Mark worked with, our GIS individual worked with Jaleen and has the proposed update before you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our reports tonight. Our deer management committee met on April 29th. John.
Good evening. We had our meeting on, okay, I forgot, I didn't write down the date. Anyway, we had a
April 29th.
Deer management meeting. The most important date. Beginning in December of 2023, they had 19 city properties were conducted by an unmanned aerial vehicle with an infrared camera mounted to it. The number of deer observed during that survey was an estimate, but actually, an estimate was likely higher than what they quote here. A total of 171 to 195 deer were observed from all locations. Removal activities were conducted by the authority of a state nuisance permit, which is issued by the Wisconsin Department of Resources. Removal dates occurred on January 3rd, 10th, 23rd, and the 30th, February 14th, and the 21st. And due to the warm weather, they decided that the 21st was the last date they were going to do because they only dropped 43 deer, or 43 deer were removed due to the very warm winter and little snow. The deer had no need to migrate into the city this year, so the total number was down. All 43 deer were taken to Leroy Meats in Fox Lake, where they were processed into ground venison burgers and donated to a total of 1,950 pounds to the food pantry. Food pantry was very acceptable, and they enjoyed all that free meat for the public. All adult deer were sampled for chronic waste disease and confirmed CWD was free of all 43 deer. The committee is requesting that in December of '24, that the city do a UAV survey conducted by the USDA Wildlife Services and to estimate the deer population within such parks and properties and determine if another depopulation is warranted in all locations or some locations or not at all. And that is the end of the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. We'll move on to our downtown bid board meeting, May 7th. Mark?
Yeah, downtown bid, Business Improvement District Board Meeting met Tuesday, May 7th, here in the council chambers. We welcomed new and returning board members. Beth Rose and Tracy Surwat were reappointed to the bid board, and new appointments included Jeremy Hahn and Jane Popinski. There was an election of officers for the 2024 term. This is the first, the first time that we've elected officers following the appointment as opposed to at the end of the year. We made that change to the bylaws, and so we have elected Peggy Fisher as our president, Tracy Surwat as our vice president, and Wesley Feast was reelected as secretary, because nobody else would do it. We approved the minutes from the April 2nd meeting and approved the financial report. We heard a presentation from Kevin Steiner about the downtown planter project, and we discussed Scott's proposal. The board approved spending up to $30,000 for watering and weed maintenance. We had a presentation on the facade grant program, which has been quasi-suspended. It is, it will be restarted, and we will be going out for proposals. We've also added some members to the facade grant board. And then we had a presentation by the Downtown West Bend Association and the Bend Theater on upcoming summer events in the downtown. Farmer's Market has a new layout. Music on Main will include two-block parties, and then Music on Main, and then two-block parties will also be held on Main Street before and after the Music on Main season. Those will be on May 30th and September 5th. Instead of the stage being up in the park, the stage will be down in front of the bend. It's going to be one of these commercials, semi-massive sound system. Nobody in town is going to, you know, get any sleep, you know, so reschedule your naps, but they're looking for that to be a big thing, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
What time do those block parties start? What's the timeframe in there?
What time do the block, I think the first one is May 24th?
Well, I mean, when does it start time?
Start time is like 5:00?
Well, the road closures start close to noon because there's a lot of, there's a lot of extra work around getting the
The road closure is at 9:00 a.m.
Oh, is it 9:00? Okay. I had heard
I want to make sure I say the right date, too. It's May 30th is the first one.
The first one's May 30th. The road closure, the section just north of Hickory on Main Street, that is at 9:00 a.m., the road will be closed, to ensure that cars are out of the area, things like that. And then the stage that Alderman Allen had mentioned, it's a large trailer stage, almost like a semi, that had to bring that in jackknife in. It's going to take the majority of the day to get that set up. Entertainment starts at 5:00 p.m. Three different entertainers, I believe. It's two or three. It's, it's, I honestly, just today, I went through the schedule. The May 30th event's going to be awesome. It's going to be pretty cool, so.
Thank you.
And it'll be a repeat on September 5th, I believe.
Same scenario, same setup, same timelines, different bands, different entertainment, so schedule your naps early.
Yeah.
Real early.
Thank you. All right. Our Plan Commission meeting, May 7th. John, you want to do that one?
Sure.
Great.
Okay. Plan Commission, May 7th. We discussed the, and approved the site plan and zoning requests for South Main Street and Progress Drive, which we approved tonight. The tower zoning change was approved. The zoning amendment on Seventh Avenue for the residential we just approved was also approved. We postponed a hearing for zoning and site plan on Daisy Drive and Clearview Drive till June. That will be brought back up at June. There was a site plan approved for Haregus at 108 West Decorum Road for Haregus landscaping. They will be building a nice headquarters building there. We also approved or accepted two extraterritorial certified survey maps, one at 1523 Walslake Road, which will be a residential, and the second one at 4246 State Highway 33, which is the sand and stone area there. That's the storage buildings right next to the sand and stone. And that was the extent of our meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Alderman Butchlick.
Did you say that Haregus landscaping was moving?
They're putting a building up at 108, which is along Eisenbaum, between Eisenbaum and the cemetery.
Okay.
I think that was where the old Life Star Building used to be.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Tourism Commission met on May 10th, 2024. So who's going to do that one?
Well, since Mr.
Sternig.
Never mind. Mr. Sternig chose to be excused absent. We met, Tourism Commission met on May 10th at noon. We approved the meeting minutes from the April 23rd meeting when Mr. Sternig was there. Mr. Sternig was absent. We still had a quorum. So we discussed a possible award of a major event grant. Came to us for reconsideration from the Bend Theater. This was for the two concerts that we just discussed. And so we made a special award of $10,000 to the Bend Theater in support of those two block parties.
Thank you. Any questions?
We're at the end of our agenda tonight. We do have an item appropriate for closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Specifically, the offer to purchase land for fire station number one.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. This requires a roll call vote to enter to closed session, so I'll call the roll. Alderman Zingsheim.
Aye.
Alderman Seizer.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
And Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Thank you. Just so the public knows, oh, excuse me. Sorry, Alderman Sparts. Would you like to join us? Alderman Sparts with an aye. So the public is informed here, this will be an informational meeting in closed session with the common council. We will not take any formal action tonight, so we will adjourn our common council meeting from closed session tonight. So, thank you very much.